We'll move into other business. We have a public hearing on amendments to the Londonderry zoning ordinance relating to the use table, floodplain overlay district. The following sections are proposed to be amended. Section 4.1.2, Use Table 4-1, Londonderry Zoning Ordinance Use Table. Section 4.1.3, Table 4-2, Gateway Business District Services Use Table. And section 4.6.3, the floodplain overlay district. And the full text on the proposed amendments were able to be viewed in the Planning and Economic Development Department and the Town Clerk's Office. So we will go to staff for a presentation on these. Once we're through, we'll go to the board for input, and then we'll go to the public for input.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the board will recall, we had a workshop meeting on this on November 8th of this year, proposing the amendments to section 4.1.2, which is the use table, as well as the Gateway Business District Services Table. And this first amendment that I'll discuss is to add hospital as a permitted use by right to the Gateway Business District. Currently, the zoning ordinance provides a definition for hospital. However, we do not have anywhere in our use table the allowance for it. We don't designate where it's permitted. So staff's recommendation is to add it to the Gateway Business District. And up on your screen, I have what that would look like in terms of the edit or amendment to the ordinance itself.
Could you take this for the public use? Is the definition of a hospital that we have?
Sure, I'll pull it up.
You're quicker at this than I am, Kelly.
So the definition of a hospital per the Londonderry zoning ordinance is any institution including a sanitarium which maintains and operates facilities for overnight care and treatment of two or more non-related persons as patients suffering mental or physical ailments, but not including any dispensary or first aid treatment facilities maintained by a commercial or industrial plant, educational institution, convent, or nursing home as previously defined.
Okay, thank you.
A quick question too. At some point in time, Kelly, could you pull up a zoning map and show everybody where the Gateway Business District is? So everybody knows specifically the area we're talking about.
So primarily, well, the Gateway Business District is located along Pettingill Road.
Just south of the Boston-Manchester Regional Airport.
So it's the brownish area. This is Pettingill, right here.
And that would be the only area impacted by this change, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, it's been something probably troublesome anyway, having a definition for it, but no, allowed not in any area. That's kind of ripe for litigation. I think any up-and-coming lawyer would like to tackle that.
We've had a number of potential users come forward and discuss with staff very preliminarily, and we've found that we don't have a place to direct them currently.
Okay, okay. I know there's all sorts of rumors floating around town about what it is, but we've had no concrete plans, nothing concrete on what is going to go there. I think staff has had some knowledge, but the board has not. The only thing I know is what is regarded hearsay that's floating around with the public and on social media. So anything else to add? Ben, you're all set?
Just to the point you just raised, the planning department does not have any application for a hospital at this time.
Yes. Okay, and then the, let's see, the floodplain, I think we're going to take these together.
Want me to cover floodplain?
The three, yes. Yeah, the three of them together.
Do you want to do them all at once, Mr. Chair? Or do you want to go to the public for each one and make a decision on each one?
They can speak to the one they want to speak to anyway.
I'd certainly want to make the motions on them separately.
Yes, yeah, motions have to be separate.
Floodplain?
Yeah.
Floodplain?
Floodplain, yes.
Okay. So the Office of Planning and Development, which is within the state office, the BEA, Economic Affairs, conducted a compliance review recently of floodplain management regulations all across the state, which of course includes Londonderry. And that is to ensure that the town remains compliant with the requirements of the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. So in response to that compliance review, amendments were prepared to the floodplain overlay district so that we can maintain our compliance with the NFIP. And essentially, what that means is that if we remain compliant, then residents who are required to hold flood insurance, or if they have flood insurance, can continue to do so through the National Flood Insurance Program.
Yes, I know this is, well, every so often when the federal government updates its flood, it passes along to the state, and the state passes it along to the communities, and we do adopt.
Typically, this is done prior to a new map adoption, the FEMA maps that is. So I would anticipate in a new county map for the FEMA floodplain areas being brought forward soon.
Yep. We'll keep up to date with the latest in floating. Okay, I'll go through the board. Just let the record show that Ann Chapa is back on the board, and Jason is not voting on this one. So I'll start with Ann.
Yeah, ready. I just have a question about, let's see, how can I find where this is now? On substantial improvement, I don't know if you can find that. I'm looking about, it starts the page with mean C level.
It's on page 65.
What page are you on, Ann?
Okay, it says substantial improvement means any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of a structure, the cost of which equals or exceeds 50% of the market value of the structure before the start of construction of the improvement. This term includes structures which have encouraged substantial damage regardless of the actual repair work performed. The term does not, however, include either, it goes on. The market value, how is that determined?
There is a formula that is defined through the, the state NFIP office has it, but it's essentially the assessed value plus any additional factors.
Okay, I was wondering if they use the town's assessed value of it, okay?
That's part of the equation, yes.
So that assessment could have been just a slightly different point in time than the point they're describing, though. If there's any valuation, we evaluate every, we reassess buildings every two years now. So this one, that's kind of a wide swing. But that's the way they do it?
That is the way they do it. And this again is specific to properties, or I should say, structures within the regulatory floodplain, which are the special flood hazard areas, and those are defined on the FEMA flood maps. So this isn't every single property in town, this is specifically those properties.
Thanks. What do you mean a wide, you know, two years isn't wide in the scope of things, but if it's a fluctuating market and, okay, thank you very much.
All set, Ann?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Tony?
So these changes are to help the current landowners in Londonderry in the event of a loss, because we're going to, our regs are going to be in compliance with what FEMA needs or other organizations, federal organizations need.
Correct. These regulations are the minimum standards as cited in the Code of Federal Regulations. If we do not have the minimum standards in our local ordinance, then we cannot provide flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program to residents that have to maintain flood insurance. And what that means is they need to then seek a private insurer, which is extremely costly.
Thank you, I'm all set.
Jeff?
I'm all set.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Roger?
Thank you, I'm all set.
Okay, Ted?
No questions.
Jason?
No questions, thank you.
Bruce?
If we make the amendment for hospital, does that, that's the only place in town that could have a hospital facility as defined built?
Correct.
So be no other place that one could be constructed?
If they wanted to, if a hospital user wanted to do a hospital use outside of the Gateway Business District, they would need to go through the variance process.
Probably the only exception to that is the...
Is that also the PUD?
The exception of the PUD.
Yeah, the PUD.
So if we make this change, PUD unaffected, still falls under PUD, this would just apply to the Gateway District?
Correct.
That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So there's really two locations where it could be. Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to these three zoning amendments?
Ray Broslin, 3 Gary Drive.
Welcome, Ray.
I have a few questions. First off, what is the description of Gateway Business District?
I think Kelly can find that. That's kind of a, I know it's mixed use. It started off as a flexible industrial zone, and then probably in the vicinity of 20 or more years ago, the planning board was debating whether to do it, and it had probably about a year's worth of good discussion with the King family and National Tamposi about use of their properties. So what it evolved into was the Gateway Business District, which we also took a look at the 2003 design charrette that covered that whole area south of the airport. And what it provided for was an industrial situation, manufacturing, but also services to people that work in that area, as in banking, you know, restaurants to eat and so forth. So people would, could work in that area. But it's more of the industrial, heavy-duty use.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, should there not be a description of that?
There is a description of that, it's in our zoning.
But I have the Gateway Business District up on the screen. It states the Gateway Business District is intended to allow for the development of gateways to the town of Londonderry, centers of commerce, and employment centers for the Southern New Hampshire region.
So it is different than an industrial zoned area?
It has a flexibility to it, so you could have other uses in there besides strictly That's what the board wanted at the time.
So you could have restaurants and housing?
You can have that, even though there aren't any there now, it probably would be easier for the people that work there instead of, I think it would reduce some of the traffic.
Yeah, I mean, there was discussion, there has been discussion about up to the airport having further housing. Is that still a thought?
That's not in this district.
It's not in this district.
It's not in the...
It's not in the Gateway Business District.
Yes, because we looked at the experience that Manchester had that built housing around the airport, and they have a lot of complaints from those people about aircraft noise. So we wanted, in Londonderry, to put our heavy usage in that area and keep the residences out of it, even though it would be, I know with the design charrette back in 2003, it provided for some living spaces. But it's not a practical thing, because if there was, those people would certainly complain about the noise.
Yeah. And the other thing I'd just like to clarify is, these two are kind of tagged together, right? In other words, the zoning change with the wetlands?
They are not tied together. We put them together because they need to be, wetland needs to be amended, but also we need to amend the zoning. So it's actually two different things here, Ray.
Should they not be separate?
They are separate, there'll be a separate motion on them, but public hearing, I'm taking input from, we're taking input from all three of them. So you can comment on each one as you would like.
Okay.
You can give us some advice, too.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused, and I hope you can clear it up. So we're talking about a hospital in the Gateway Business District, and why then does it affect the wetland or the floodplain?
There's no connection there.
No.
It doesn't, no connection.
I think they should be separate.
There's no connection between the two. There's just two changes, one in the floodplain overlay district and one in the Gateway Business District that we're hearing at the same time. They're going to be voted on separately, because they are two separate items.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that for me. Is there not also a 500-year floodplain?
There is.
There is.
Should that not be something we're concerned with?
It's not part of the regulatory floodplain area.
I'm suggesting perhaps it, maybe it should be. Maybe we're getting off track here, but...
That'd be a federal government decision, Ray.
Well, that's what, we follow the federal government and the state.
Yeah, they have the experts between FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, and we're having a lot of impact from weather and floods that we never had before.
We certainly are, that's why we're getting more updates because of this.
I'm suggesting maybe we should look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll keep our federal officials on their toes.
Well, yeah, have the conversation, for sure.
Yes.
Army Corps of Engineers would be a good place to start, I would suggest.
Oh, yes, they're involved with a lot, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Anyone else? And I'll need your name and address, please.
My name is Robin Stewart. I live at 522 Mammoth Road, Old Mammoth. So I know you don't have a plan for a hospital yet, because you can't put a plan in until you all approve that hospital has a, whatever is allowed in this area. And I just wonder, when you do that, the can of worms that you're opening, because the traffic that's involved with something like that, I live at Old Mammoth, Grunier Field is a disaster as it is now, we're already having so many problems with our road and traffic and cut through. You had a hospital there where you have to have patients and employees and everything that goes along with that. And I'm not sure how any of this work, I've never been to a planning board meeting before, just so you know, but...
Well, welcome.
Thanks. But it seems to me that every time you guys make a decision, it's us that pays the impact on it. And this, our little village can't take much more. And Pettingill's right on the other side of that. It's, you go to the end of the rail trail, and you're right there, you know? We can't take much more traffic, and if you keep approving all these things, then we're paying this impact for all of your decisions. And my thought is maybe somebody should take a breath and stop for a minute and think about what they're doing to the town and to us as people who live in this town. I've lived here for, since 1978 quite a bit. And I understand there's changes, and you expect changes, but when you, everything just gets approved, and then nobody can figure out what to do with it all. You know, just like Perkins Road, I know that's not up to debate, but you put another 132 houses there, can you imagine what exit five's going to be like? It's not easy now, getting off it or getting on it during any time of the day, let alone traffic times. Like, these things don't seem to me to be thought through by anybody. And once you guys approve the word "hospital," that sets us up for just a disaster. It's increased police, it's increased ambulances, fire department, traffic, water, everything that affects all of us, but the traffic in particular in that area, and the accidents on Page and Grunier, or Page and Grunier and Old Mammoth is just, I don't know whether all this stuff goes in front of the traffic committee before you guys decide to say yes to everything, I don't know. I don't know how it works, but...
I know if, when we do get a, I'm sure there'll probably be a site plan coming at some point in the future.
Clearly, yeah.
Site plan is, goes through the process you see here. There's the presentation of the board, the board's input, and the public input, it's a public hearing. And there's a lot of, and I'm sure anything that happens there, traffic engineers are involved, and it's, you know, the board puts them through a rigorous process because of traffic impacts. That's probably the biggest impact we have in town. And, I mean, we're growing. I think Londonderry, I wish it wasn't as popular as it is, because it makes some of our lives easier.
Sure, but we don't need to say yes to everything. We don't need to give everybody variances. Everybody has a right to do with what they want on their property, and I get that. And, but we don't have to say yes to everything. There's nothing in this town that says, yes, do whatever you want, it doesn't matter about anyone else. We've taken 11 years, 11 years about the traffic on Old Mammoth. We just, the town council is the first town council who've actually recognized that it's a Zen issue, and is now miraculously doing something about it, thank them. But it took us 11 years. So to say that it goes through a traffic committee, once you guys say yes, it might. But once the problem's there, how long does it take to fix the problem? Is my, I guess my point.
Yes, yes. I think we all understand, but we have our regulations, we have the state statutes, we have reams of case law that a person's property...
Does it have to say hospital? Is there anything that says we have to?
State legislature is very strong on protecting personal property.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we have to, we have to deal with. It'll take some long-range planning, and I think in a year or two, we'll be redoing our master plan. That'll be a good opportunity for...
We should, because when you look what Londonderry says in your master plan, it's nothing like it is now. Nothing, even the pictures aren't even what Londonderry is any longer.
That's why we want to do an update.
Probably a good idea.
Because after 10 years, times change. Jason?
I live on the trucking raceway that is Hall Road.
Oh, well, so you're familiar.
I understand, so I can empathize with what you're saying.
I just think that that's a village, that's the old part of town, and we live in houses as they do on Hall Road. The houses are close to the road. We don't have the availability of having an acre in front of our house before you get to our doorway when there's an accident or anything else that happens. And so when everybody keeps dumping things at the north end, and people don't want to keep going on Rockingham Road because the light now, and it's just a pain in the neck, too much traffic, so they just come right through, they go down Hall Road and hit high range. It's all just whatever we can do the fastest. But when you, when we keep saying yes to everything, and I understand that there's laws, but I don't think that yes is always the answer. Sometimes it's, we need to take a breath, and we'll think about it, it doesn't have to be made right this minute.
Yep. Well, Tony?
Thank you, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but I just wanted to go through the list of things that are currently permitted in the zone, if that's okay. So whether or not this board decides to put a hospital in that zone, you can currently have live-work units there.
Have what? I'm sorry.
Live-work units. You can have public facilities, any kind of public facility, public utilities, cultural uses, and performing arts.
Which would be like a stadium?
A stadium, performing arts center. You can have assembly testing, repair, and packaging operations up to 250,000 square feet.
Well, they have that.
But more, is what I'm saying, there could be more of that. Business center development, conference, a conference convention center. Quite a bit of traffic associated with that. So that's just, I'm not going to go through, but just to make the point, it just so happens that there's some vacant land up there now, but it still could be densely used, lots of traffic, whatever. Understand that any proposal that comes to this board has to go through the planning department, which requires traffic studies. And some of those traffic studies, most of them are very, very comprehensive and very expensive for the reason that, the exact reason that you're talking about. And so, you know, the process is the process, but whether or not this board decides to put hospital in that zone or not really is not going to affect much more of what could possibly be put in that zone, or what could be built in that zone. So I know that doesn't help you, but...
No, but I just want, I just want you to think about this one thing, because of course, there's been all this on social media and throughout the town, the talk of it being a psych and hospital. So, and I forget how many beds I read, but even if it were close to New Hampshire Hospital, New Hampshire Hospital has, I think, I want to say 160 beds is, the hospital, my understanding, would not have that many, but close. New Hampshire Hospital has 3,000 to 4,000 people every day coming in and out of that place between patients and workers and visitors. Where would we put anything close to that in traffic in our nice little village, which should have been able to stay somewhat of a nice little village?
Yeah, well, and I understand, I really do understand, I don't live on that road, so I can understand, but I don't have to deal with it, unfortunately. But I will say that the town council, and I was at that meeting, is addressing...
Absolutely, and I'm so appreciative for what they're doing.
Yeah, and is doing the best that they can with what they have to work with right now. And based on what I saw at that meeting, I think your problems are going to be addressed.
But not if you keep dumping more, that's the point.
As much as can be, well, that remains to be seen, because we don't know exactly what they're going to approve, what the council's going to approve or not approve. I think we all could be very surprised at how much they can mitigate that traffic, but we don't know until it happens. But I appreciate your comments, I appreciate you taking the time to come out, to speak before us. Any information that we get certainly helps us in trying to make a decision and vote, and then we see what happens. So I can't speak to anything that you see on social media, I don't know where that's coming from or how that's coming from, but...
I don't either, but it...
But at any rate, that is what it is, and we'll just have to wait and see. But thank you for entertaining my thoughts.
All right, thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Because all the, the planning board function on this is to make a recommendation to the town council. The town council will adopt it. They've already had their first public reading, which is to just introduce it, and then their second reading will be a public hearing. So the town council will have a public hearing on this, they're the ones that make the decisions. Anyone else? Ray, you're the active one tonight. You got anything new?
Yeah, regional impact.
That would be determined once a plan comes to...
Yes, once we have a plan on hand.
Yeah.
Staff does the, you know, the calculation.
Should this not be something we think about, though?
Yeah, it might be. If it's determined to be a regional impact, it goes to the planning commissions and the surrounding... planning commissions and the surrounding towns of what's, what's happening there, and then that input is solicited from them.
Are we suggesting that this hospital would be on Rockingham Road? Do we, we have any idea where it would be? We'd have no idea?
Hold on.
We have no idea.
Can I, can I speak to the regional impact?
What?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, regional impact is determined once an application is actually received. Similar to the New Balance project, staff recommended that that project was of regional impact, we went through the process because of the significance of the project, traffic and proximity to other municipal boundaries, such as Manchester. A zoning amendment does not trigger a regional impact determination, because it's not a, a site plan application. Hopefully, that clarifies things a bit.
Well, that, that, that helps, yeah. But the reason I'm asking that, whether or not it's on Rockingham Road, but we don't know.
Clarification on that?
Sure, go ahead.
So, Ray, right now, we're looking at adding a zoning, a hospital zoning to the Gateway Business District. The Gateway Business District is up in that area, call it Pettingill Road, Rockingham 20, Route 28 is not part of the Gateway Business District.
Okay, well, it's a little hard to tell from that map.
So, this map right here, this is the Gateway Business District, okay?
You can go up here, Ray, for a closer look if you want.
This is...
Yeah, it's up there, too.
What's this, the end of High Range Road? So, Route 28 is about way over that way. Hardy Road, excuse me.
Harvey.
Harvey.
Harvey. Route 28's way over here. The Gateway Business District is from the end of the runway, essentially to the...
West.
To the west of Londonderry. There's nowhere near Route 28.
Okay, so that brown area is the only gateway district in the town of Londonderry?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
I think you might be mixing it up with the Route 28 Performance Overlay that was discussed as well.
Quite probably, you know, I, I went on the zoning map, and I'm, I'm looking at different purple colors that I thought said GB, but maybe I was mistaken.
That's the only one. What you see up, what you see up there in brown, tan, whatever color it is, is the only one.
The, the purple is industrial.
Okay. I gotta put my glasses on next time I look. I thought, sure, one of those purples said GB, but I guess I'm wrong.
Purples look to be Industrial 1 and Industrial 2.
And what are the light colored beige, are those where there are buildings?
Yes.
You're talking about this, Ray?
Yeah.
Those are current existing structures.
That's FedEx, that's Televance Beverage, that's UPS, that's FW Web.
Oh.
That's EFI, that's New Balance.
Okay.
So, you're talking in the areas where there's already really massive...
Yeah.
Buildings, and, and the idea is, right, you have access to Raymond Wazorick, you know?
Yeah.
The high, you know?
Yeah, Route 3 and the DCA.
Right, 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 yeah.
That's why it's kind of like a, a gateway.
Oh, okay.
Trying to confine it to one specific area, which is why I asked the question about where else could it possibly be, and that is where else it could be, would be in the Woodmont Commons, because it's, it's, it's under PUD, right? So, it has a different zoning requirement. That's all we're talking about tonight, we're just talking about our current zoning defines what a hospital is, but then we don't identify any area where one could build such a hospital.
Right.
The area that makes the most sense to allow for a hospital to be built would be the Gateway Business District, where realistically, as the previous speaker spoke about, you need a lot of land in order to accomplish a project of that magnitude.
And there is a lot of land.
You know, most people, when they think of hospital, they're thinking of like Elliott or, you know, CMC...
Right.
Or Southern New Hampshire, right? But it could, it could very well be a smaller building that houses patients that are on overnight, you know?
Would this designation of hospital also include animal hospitals?
No, no, this would just affect people.
I don't, I don't think it said anything about people.
It does, I believe it actually does define...
It does, right.
Animal hospitals as well.
There's an animal hospital in there.
Yeah, well, we've had some animal, animal hospital now become urgent care.
Yeah, we got urgent care right on Buttrick Road.
And that's not considered a hospital, because they do not have overnight services.
Which, which is a, which is a good point, the Elliott, the Elliott Building right here on Buttrick Road does not meet the definition of a hospital, because it's not a hospital, it's a...
It's not overnight.
It's a doctor's office, essentially.
Right, 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 right.
So, you know, the, the different, the different categories of hospital is variable as well.
Yeah, and just one other thing, oh, it's gone, the map's gone.
There it is.
Pettingill Road, Wazorick Drive, whatever it is, uh...
Raymond J. Vitrotic Drive.
Pardon?
Raymond J. Vitrotic, former mayor of Manchester.
Ray Wazorick.
The bridge.
It's the only one around yet.
Yeah, however you pronounce that one. I'm wondering where the, the gravel pit, oh, we're getting off track. Where, where was the gravel pit that Brady Sullivan dumped all that contamination? That's, that's not in that district, is it?
Some of that, was that where we were?
I got nothing, way over the zoning.
I have no idea.
Huh?
I think I know what you're talking about, Ray.
We're getting off track.
Yeah, we're, we're off the track, Ray.
Well, okay.
It's not a busy night right now, so we're letting you talk, otherwise, we wouldn't, yeah.
I, I appreciate what you're doing, you, you have a lot of decisions to make, a lot of things to think about, and somebody mentioned something about traffic, that is really important, but what you're talking about there on, how do you pronounce that again?
Ray Wazorick.
Ray Wazorick. That's, that's a pretty big road that could handle quite a bit of traffic without impacting the village of North Londonderry.
And that would also be a consideration for the board as to if a plan, big if, right, if a plan for a hospital-type facility was to come before the board...
Right.
It would have to fit in the right land, at the right spot, meet the right conditions, have the right studies, right? It's not just a hospital would appear in front of us tomorrow and would be built 365 days from, you know...
Oh, it's a long process, for sure.
A long process, and there would be a lot of studying done.
Speaking of process, I'm going to cut this short.
Okay, well, we, we want to educate you, Ray.
We can all be educated.
That's true, very true.
We've talked a lot about potential hospitals, I'd like to just remind us that we're talking just about the zoning amendment itself, and that any facility that is, if the zoning amendment passes, any facility that could go into this hospital use is going to go through an entire design review process, traffic study, and come before us to make a decision on it. And that this is just on the zoning of the piece of land, and this is also a recommendation to the council.
That is correct, Jake.
Mr. Chair, could, could staff speak to how we arrived at the Gateway District for this zoning amendment?
I don't know if you can add anything to that. I, I know there's a, a long history that got, got to the Gateway Business District, but it's, it's basically designed to be flexible.
That's exactly right, Mr. Chair, and I went back to the mask, the 2013 master plan, which identifies this Gateway Business District area as a special district, the Industrial Village Special District, and it states the Industrial, Industrial Village Special District represents the concept for self-sustaining industrial, industrial village south of the airport near Pettingill Road. The center would promote industrial office and retail development, acting as sustainable, closed-loop eco-village where businesses feed each other for productivity. I also looked at the other uses within the Gateway Business District. The district already allows for medical offices, professional offices, which are as close as we have to a hospital-type use. I also thought about where, in terms of traffic, would it make sense to locate a potential large user such as a hospital? And the professional opinion was Gateway Business District makes the most sense.
Excellent.
Thank you. Just to clarify that, so the way it stands today, theoretically, the Elliott Urgent Care that's over here could be inside of the Gateway Business District?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, they have C3 on Buttrick.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? I do not see anyone else, we'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing, and we'll take things separately for, for motions.
Give me a second here, Mr. Chair.
But, but actually, the first two sections, 4.1.2, 4.1.3 are really the same, doesn't say it accomplishes the same thing. Kelly?
There's two sections that are amended for the addition of hospital as a permitted use, it's section 4.1.2, which is the use table, and section 4.1.3, which is the Gateway Business District Services Use Table.
Okay, so we should take those separate for motions?
Up to you.
Okay. We could take them together.
To me, yeah, you can't have one, I can see having the floodplain separate from these two, but...
Why don't we keep them all separate?
Would we be comfortable, keep them separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine, it's just another vote.
So, let me think here, if I understood that right, we'd make a motion to recommend to the town council, section 4.1.2.
This is use table 4-1.
For use table 4-1.
That's it.
Section 4.1.2, use table 4-1, the addition of hospital to...
There we go, thanks, Kelly.
By right, permitted by right to the Gateway Business District.
Perfect.
That sounds good.
Take a second.
Second motion? Okay, motion made by Jake, second by Lynn, for section 4.1.2, use table 4.4-1, Londonderry Zoning Ordinance Use Table, and that is the addition of the, the hospital. Any discussion by the board or further discussion? Saying none, all ohs in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All ohs opposed, say nay. Abstentions, shares affirmative?
I'll stand, reserve my vote for the town council.
Okay, let the record show Ted is abstaining, because he's going to have to address this issue on the town council. So, motion carries, it goes to the town council for their disposition of it.
So, Kelly, I might need your help to finish this one off for me, but I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the council, section 4.1.3, table 4-2 of the Gateway Business District Services Use Table.
To add hospital as a permitted use.
To add hospital as a permitted use, thank you.
By right.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Jake, second by Bruce.
Tony, did you want to add something to that?
By right, as permitted use by right.
Yeah.
By right is important.
Yep, yes.
I'm fine with that.
Yep, that makes it work. Okay, any further discussion by the board? Saying none, all ohs in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All ohs opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
Abstain.
And the record show that Ted has abstained, and Chair votes affirmative, and motion carries, that will go to the town council for their education.